We called the meeting to order and we're continuing our vendor presentation. And tonight, we have the Massachusetts School Committee Association giving us a presentation on the whole hiring of a superintendent what they offer. Why don't you -- you can come right up here and make yourself comfortable. And you have handouts.
I do. I have some basic material before we talk about it. This is a general outline of the superintendent search school services. And I have extra copies to remember as well. Secondly, I don't know whether you're looking for an actual proposal or whether you just wanted to talk about searching, but I did bring with me a proposal which describes the services that we provide and the no-fee services that we provide for those districts that want to manage their own searches without incurring cost.
Do you have a work ethic by the way?
MASC has been doing searches for 35 years. We provide services to our members that include full superintendent search consultancy and technical assistance without the districts that have the interest or the capacity to do some of the management themselves. We have this extensive range of services that we can provide for free. We pride ourselves in delivering to the district the search that they tell us they want to have. And we are eager to provide you with whatever guidance, assistance, and recommendations about how an exemplary search should go. We certainly have a model that we use, but we adapt it -- excuse me. We adapt it to meet the needs and requests of our districts. So that includes beginning by talking to the school committee and the stakeholders about what they view as the necessary criteria for the search in the next superintendency. We have several publications which I can easily make available to you. One of them is what we call an "Oh My God" brochure. It's what you -- when people find out that they're looking for a vacancy, they're looking for a superintendent and looking at the sort of checklist and decision tree that they have to confront before they begin the process of selecting a superintendent. We can walk you through those steps. Identify what you're looking for as decision criteria, what you're looking for as skills and credentials of your next superintendent. We can then begin to work with you to develop the promotional materials, whether it be a brochure, whether it be an online brochure, or other kinds of resources that can be disseminated through our recruiting lists and recruiting networks. We certainly would post your vacancy on our website no matter what you do. Most of the people who want to become superintendents in Massachusetts learn about the vacancies by going to our website or the Superintendent's Association website. And both of us put your searches on the website for free to member districts. So the universe of candidates will know that you have a vacancy. And they will know what you're looking for because you will describe it for them and they will help you do that. Once you've identified the search criteria and the credentials and sort of developed a process, that usually begins by working with a search committee. And the reason that search committees are a very popular vehicle in searches is that it's the only way that you get to have a confidential part of your process. In other words, if the school committee wishes to act as its own search committee, the law does not give you the right to convene an executive session to review the resumes and interview the candidates initially. And as a result, you get very few candidates if everybody's going to be exposed to the public just for being a candidate. So usually, there's a search committee. It usually involves a non-majority of the school committee. So I mean, there are two schools of thought here. There are those who say the school committee shouldn't be involved, and the school of thought that says the school committee needs to be involved at the search committee level. And I am of the latter point of view. I think it's very helpful that members of the school committee and the search committee to always be sure that the priorities of the school committee are followed. The school committee will, if it has a search committee, will give directions to the search committee. Those directions might include: review all of the applications that come in; work with a search consultant to identify the best candidates and bring them in for interviews; develop and interview, and interview the candidates, assess them, determine whom you'd like to move forward with the school committee; and then the school committee conducts the rest of the process, which by law must be all in public. So you might tell the search committee, "Give us three finalists, give us four finalists." You might tell the search committee, "Don't bring anybody forward whom you not prepared to be a superintendent." You know, sometimes a search committee will say, "We're sending three right-handed people up there, we need a left-handed person." And they'll throw in somebody who's not really viable for the superintendency but rounds out the pool. You don't want to do that in a superintendent search. It is -- because when it becomes public, we have friends who help us with our searches whether we like it or not. The Googlers, the bloggers, the social media people. And I can tell you, anybody who's ever been a principal or a superintendent and who has ever said no to a parent, or suspended a child, or terminated a teacher, or counseled somebody out of the profession, they have people that are eager to settle the score. And they Google you once a week, they find out where you are, and they start calling the school committee saying, "Don't hire Terry Smith, who used to be in Mayberry. Terry hates children. Terry isn't fair to teachers." So whatever it might be, this will happen. Social media and the Internet has made it possible for people to follow people for decades, and that's become a serious issue. The other thing that I would add about a search committee is if you do have a search committee, be mindful of the fact that your faculty will want to control the process. And it is a frequent occurrence that faculty members on search committees are very important, but not as an overwhelming majority, because they do what's best for them, not necessarily what's best for the overall community. And that's why the school committee is in charge of the process. So I would say to you, the worst things to have on a search committee are insecure administrators and teachers who have an axe to grind, because they tend to make sure that whoever comes out of the search committee is going to be friendly to their perspective and not pose a threat to them. So I'm not offending anybody, but that's the reality of our experience.
So with that said, would you have the head of the union involved?
That would be the school committee's call. But we recommend that the school committee identify the slots available for the search committee, and that the school committee either directly or through its designee makes the appointments of who's on the search committee. It's helpful, well, obviously very important, to have teachers on the search committee.
Right.
Sometimes the union president is a member of the search committee. Sometimes the union president designates a member of the search committee. Other times, the school committee appoints from a pool of teachers who've indicated they're interested in being on the search committee. My experience has been that appointing the teachers, teacher or teachers, administrators, whoever it might be, should come from the school committee.
Okay.
It's your best way of making sure that the process is as objective as it can be.
Do you know where in the Mass law that it states that the school committee, you know, the open meeting law versus executive session? Because I was trying to understand it more myself.
You won't find it in the law.
I could not find it.
Because it's not in the law. It's the Attorney General's interpretation of the law. The Attorney General has ruled that the school committee as a body cannot be the initial screening and interview panel. Now, I will tell you, we object to that strenuously. We didn't think it was the intent of the legislation. We made that clear to the Attorney General's office, and their response was, "Thank you for your opinion." And we've rendered ours, and that's the one that counts. It wasn't this Attorney General, it was the previous one. And Martha Coakley, when she was Middlesex County DA, was the toughest open-meeting-law DA in the state. So when she became Attorney General, that just carried through. Prior to the new open-meeting law, it depended on which county you were. So it was interpreted differently all over the state. So that's what it is. I suppose I would welcome a court challenge. We're trying to meet with the new Attorney General to try to see if we can make some things reasonable. But remember, this is Massachusetts, and we have rules. And the people who make the rules never surrender their ability to regulate and punish. It's just the way it is here. I give you the State Department of Education first. I'm sorry for the rant, but...
No, I appreciate, you really cleared this up for me. I mean, I spent the last weekend doing all kinds of research, and it's just, everything's so open to interpretation.
You should have called me.
You would save me a lot of time. You don't hear at all when you go to trudging the course, too. Yeah, I don't know if they're going to hear this level of detail, though. Sure you do, I did. Because Glenn was up there talking.
I can tell you that we have an extensive recruiting list. We're in contact with a lot of candidates who want to be superintendent. But I'll also tell you that there's not a person who was a finalist to be a superintendent in Massachusetts in the last couple of years that wasn't known to all of us. They all find the district. Your ability to attract candidates is more a function of why the superintendent is leaving, your superintendent's having a career change, so that's not going to hurt you. What kind of a district is it, what kind of a community is it? I mean, the quality of life here is terrific if one enjoys the rural living. And there's plenty of activity around because of the Five College area, the proximity to Springfield. You're easy to get to wherever you need to go by car. There are candidates around the rest of the country who are terrified of snow and can't believe that we're still driving around after the winter we went through. There are those who are anxious about coming to Massachusetts because of the rancid regulatory climate that we have. You know, the fear that no matter how good you are, you're liable to have some type of sanction or risk some type of sanction. The best example, by the way, is one of our communities' high school was just lowered to Level 3 because their English-language learners did not take the Science MCAS exam at the high school level in significant numbers, because the exam is only given in English and the kids don't speak English. So for that, they dropped a level. And they tried to appeal, they tried to get somebody reasonable to deal with them, nobody was dealing with. There are people who don't want to walk into a scenario like that. But those of us who are here, and the universe of people in the Northeast are not daunted by that, we get people calling us from all over the state, all the time, looking to see where the vacancies are. I will tell you that this late in the school year, many of the best candidates have already been recruited and have been selected in districts. And this is not the greatest time to go looking for a superintendent for July, because you won't find the pool that you would have found in September, October. That said, depending upon the timeframe that you're looking for, there are districts that have been successful and have found people to be their superintendent for the start of school with a six-month lead time. So it's...
So what is the best...
Well, if you started a search now and didn't like what you got, then you just start over in September. Any search consultant that you hired should be hired with the obligation that whatever fees are involved apply until you have hired a superintendent whom you want and that that superintendent has signed a contract. So never accept what's left if it's not what you want. You just start over. And we've started over a few times. And that happens. You don't intend for that to be the outcome, but that's what happens. My understanding is that you'd like to have somebody in place for September, but that you may be prepared for the contingency that it might take a longer period of time. And I would say to you, if I were making the decision for you, I'd wait a little bit before I got started. On the other hand, if you try to find a superintendent and you fail, the state will allow you to, you know, bring in an interim superintendent under a salary waiver, which means they can earn as much as they want without having their pensions affected. Although if you have an interim superintendent who's not affected by the need for salary waiver, the interim superintendent could just remain in place.
So if you're saying that we're better off waiting, how long would we wait when we start in July, this process?
Well, you could start the process in July, begin planning over the summer, start talking to your community either in May, June, or September to get some discussions going on. We do a lot of online surveys with the district. We do focus groups as part of the process, meeting with stakeholders, talking to the faculty, talking to the community, getting feedback. We have some sample focus group summary reports, and we have the online surveys. We find that probably 10 times as many people respond to the online surveys as come out of the focus discussions. Unless a district is in trouble, unless there's serious trouble, like a superintendent being thrown out, if there's corruption, if there's significant unaccounted poor money, you don't get people turning up. Parents generally have a level of confidence in the school district. And unless there is a crisis, you don't see that disrupted. On focus group surveys, you find a lot of people giving you more detailed information. And if you use open responses to complement your direct visits with the community and leadership, you'll find you'll get good feedback. If you wanted to, we put surveys up for our member districts all the time to see where people are coming from and to ask them what they think, and to give you guidance in the process. And as I say...
And how do you get that out to, I guess, the community that there is a survey?
Well, we create the survey. The district promotes the survey through the faculty, the parents, whatever local media and social media is covering you. It's actually very easy to do. It was a lot easier when there were, when there was a better proliferation of newspapers in the area. Is the Hampshire Gazette...
Yeah.
Is it red here?
Yes.
Okay. They've been pretty good about this stuff.
The Sentinel, too.
Sentinel, the Town Reminder.
Town Reminder. I'm sure you can put a link on the website.
Republican. Often times, districts will invite people to submit a letter of inquiry to be on the focus group, to be on the search committee. Other times, the school committee designates the chair to gather statements of interest, and depending upon what your policy is for appointing the search committee, you either leave it to the chair, or the school committee makes the appointments.
Glenn, is there a reason for the pool to be a little richer later on in the year? Because many of those folks are ready to make a change in their career and they get out of some school district?
You could be ahead of the curve for the 2016 candidate pool. There will be people who will be retiring in other states who are eager to come to Massachusetts and work for another five to seven years. Remember, in a previous era, before the era of early retirement, a lot of people worked right to 70 and beyond, and did well. Now, when you're 57 years old, the retirement system is encouraging you to leave, which is, I can tell you as a gerontologist, which is what I did in my civilian life, early retirement is not a great strategy for people. Daytime TV is terrible, you don't want to be on that.
The reason why I'm asking that is this. Without looking at out-of-state opportunities, you know, folks who are looking for some opportunity in Massachusetts, we're looking at a fixed pool. People leave and just they go find jobs within Massachusetts elsewhere. So if there are so many folks looking for jobs, that would tell me that chances are there are so many schools that are looking for a new superintendent. So I'm not sure whether or not that would put us at a disadvantage if there are so many competitors for that pool that is out there, or maybe it doesn't really change the circumstances between now and later on.
Now, at the moment, two or three districts in the western Massachusetts area are looking for superintendents. Most of the superintendent vacancies are a function of retirement. Occasionally, there's a non-contract renewal, but it's largely retirement, or the superintendent's decided to make a career change, either go to another state, or some of them are going to higher education and taking faculty positions. There aren't that many vacancies. And there's no shortage of candidates, it's the shortage of Tier 1 candidates, the best people who are ready to be superintendents.
So let me just follow up with a different side of that question. In your experience, are folks looking primarily for seasoned superintendents who have been through several districts, who have the experience? Or are there districts that are looking for some newer candidates, starters, who have, you know, a good promise for the future, and just they ask the right questions to find those candidates that are waiting to be discovered?
They are looking for people with experience, not necessarily in the superintendency, but they're looking at people who are familiar with the regulatory climate, people who are familiar with curriculum and instruction, or who know how to supervise the people that do curriculum and instruction. For example, some districts will hire people with great operations backgrounds if the finances of the district need to be reorganized, as long as there's curriculum and instruction strength in the district. On the other hand, sometimes it's curriculum and instruction that's weak, and they're looking for a superintendent who's strong in that area. Everybody's looking for that measure of professional competence, but they're also looking for superior communication skills to speak within the district and to speak to the community and to speak to the state. They're looking for people who are politically savvy in working with the municipal side and building a relationship with the community. We see some interested people who are technologically savvy to deal with the different technologies and the costs. And they appreciate people who can integrate budget and non-budgetary, who can do budget fiscal planning and planning around the non-fiscal elements of what happens in a school district. Strategic planning is not so much in demand as much as people who have a good sense of organizational management and who can build and lead good teams with proficient people who will stay with them. They're also looking, school committees are looking for people who'll commit and would expect this district to be a destination district. In other words, that this would not be a stepping stone on the way to another community to get to Worcester, to get to Boston, to get to New York, to go wherever else that they want to go. And in western Massachusetts, with its quality of life, there are people who really envision coming here and staying here.
So I'm sure we'll have, we're about halfway through, and I don't want to keep you all night. So you said you brought proposals, and I'm sure we'll have questions going through that.
Okay.
So if we could walk through that, would that be a good step?
That's fine. Here, and for the record. And I can also give you an electronic version of this, if you want, we'll have it to be minutes. The proposal is simply a summary of what I've described.
That would be great.
And it is annotated with footnotes on the bottom to talk about some very specific steps. I think I've touched on most of them. I also brought for your information a sample of the kinds of resources that we provide. This is our question guide. We compile sample interviews, model interviews, dozens and dozens of sample questions, so that when you're interviewing candidates, this is designed to either give you samples of questions to pose, or ideas about what and how you develop questions.
Excellent.
And while this is not a copyrighted document, and while it is not a confidential document, I just don't give this away to people who are member districts. It's not like there are great secrets in this. But we did compile model interviews, and I could provide for any of you samples of what a dozen districts have done. A good superintendent interview, at the initial stage and the final stage, should be at least 75 minutes. Don't rush them in and out, this is an important decision, and you don't want to make this on the basis of a very short visit. The other thing I should mention about MASC is that we are present at all phases of the search process. So we do the focus groups. We manage the online survey. We give you the data, but we take care of that. When you're doing your interviewing, when you're orienting the search committee, we provide the orientation. And we're here when the candidates are here, in an inconspicuous role, basically, being the liaison with the candidates, bringing them in and out. When you're interviewing candidates, I'm not at the table, I'm in the back of the room. If anything, he needs some help, he needs some assistance, he needs some questions to him, he needed a candidate brought in or brought out, that's what we're here for. We're here not because the search committee or the school committee require adult supervision, but because people want another person here who can handle that stuff. And that's one of the things that we do.
As far as online surveys go, are you giving us raw data, or are you summarizing it and giving us...
We do two things. We give you the raw data from the survey. And usually, surveys are a mix of multiple choice and open response. So you get all the responses, you get all the data, and then you get aggregation of what the data are. But we integrate that as well... But we integrate that as well with the focus groups, in that you get a printout of everything from the online survey. We also give you a summary report of the focus groups that we talked to and incorporate into that some of the points that come from the online survey. Usually, the data are not different, but when you focus group with people, you can probe, you can have longer discussions, and then you can draw out of them some of the unique facets of the community, some of the things that are very important to the community that candidates need to know about. And then we encourage providing the focus summary report and the focus group data to the candidates themselves. We do, however, review the online surveys and take out those comments, which either violate somebody's privacy or editorialize about somebody who's entitled to privacy. You get some inappropriate comments and we take them out. We actually had a, we had a member of a search committee stalked electronically by somebody who had been looking for this person for a while. And it turned out when the community said, you know, here are the search committee members, Fran Jones, Jones, whatever he might have been, and somebody with a relatively unusual name, it could only be one person knew of this name, was found out by someone who had been stalking this person electronically, went onto the online survey and made some inappropriate comments.
So if anybody's looking for me?
Well, I know. Well, that's true. Actually, you're, except for Marie, you've got some pretty unusual names. So it is a little bit daunting when you consider the number of people who can now help you with your search, whether you like it or not. And that includes the media. The media are not accountable to you, they don't have to ask permission, they can ask questions you can't, and they can do whatever they like with what they find out. School committee, as the employer, is restricted to what the law allows. And in the question guide, you see a list of things that you're generally discouraged from, prohibited from asking.
Now, we hired you four years ago. We hired Isabelleina Rodriguez. So we did go through the organization four years ago. Would our, would you still have the results of our surveys and anything like that? And could there be a comparison done to surveys done four years ago to what the survey results are showing today?
Did you do an online survey?
I'm trying to think if we did or didn't at that point.
Well, the focus group summary.
I think we did a lot of focus groups. I don't even know if we had access to the surveys back then.
Well, if we did, if we did have access, then if we did an online survey, that certainly would save. We don't throw away data for probably seven years.
Okay. And I can't remember.
And you can have that, whatever you choose to do, whatever, if we've got something in our files that is from you, from Granby, you just request it, we give it to you. But electronically, that stuff is saved, and I suspect that the applications have also been saved. But I also have to think that somewhere in this school district, there are also copies.
Yeah.
We can get you what you need.
I can ask Kathy too, but if we can just get the latest copies. And another, would, who would be assigned to Granby? Would it be Pat again?
Well, it would be Pat and me. Pat will be retiring during the summer. So it's likely that I will be carrying the bulk of her work until we retain somebody to take her place. We will be bringing on a new field director, but we haven't begun the process.
So is there any chance that we can have another consultant, considering that we might be changing?
Well, it would be, the stability would come from me. I do searches as well.
Okay.
I actually do three or four searches a year.
Because I'll be very upfront. You know, we worked with Pat last time, lovely woman, but I will tell you, there were some clashes with the search committee in the past. At some point, we felt that the direction that she was leading us, we didn't want to go in and certain things. So I actually would not want to relive that. I'll be very upfront about that.
If the school committee made a specific conditional request, we went on to that request.
Okay. Thank you.
Fair enough.
Yeah, very fair.
As far as finalists go.
As far as.
Finalists?
Oh, some sort.
I'm completely changing direction, I'm sorry.
She said the finalists.
Yeah.
Yeah, she thought I gathered candidates picked.
What is the standard? My concern is, three seems too little for the entire school committee to be considering.
Right.
I envision more, you know, getting involved when it's five, seven, eight, as opposed to three, as a whole committee.
That's a lot.
I understand that.
Because you're opening up school visits, district visits, and it's a lot of work.
I get all that. I also think that, you know, as a committee, you know, one of our number-one responsibilities is to hire the appropriate superintendent, and we have that opportunity to do so. So it kind of feels as though I'd rather not delegate.
But you have to put trust, I think, into the search committee that they will, you know, even if three's too little, say we say it's four or five, whatever. But hopefully, when we build that search committee, that they know the type of candidate that we want as a school committee, but more importantly, what the community wants. And so I would hope that by narrowing it down to, I know you don't care for the number three, but if we went to four to five, I think seven to eight would be totally outrageous to try to, you know, organize all those district visits and without totally disrupting the school. And that's another thing, is that when you're narrowing it down, you do want those visits to be happening when school's in session. So that's another thing we have to think about, too, because you don't want the candidates to be coming to an empty school.
Yeah, I get all that. I just, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with three, for sure.
So between the two scenarios of having, the school committee having the ability to be the search party goal, you know, going back to the example that we had before, and owning the whole process, and the school committee being the final decision-maker based on the feedback that is provided through the screening committee, I guess, what is the, I also understand that, you know, there are many examples before us where three probably was, or three, four, whatever was the number. But not holding ourselves to that, but going with whatever, as a school committee, we feel will give us the number of candidates in a pool that will allow us to say, you know what, confidently, five probably, for instance, or four, or whatever, was the number that we were looking for to be able to evaluate.
We might eliminate, we might eliminate some of those finalists, because they'll say, if you're choosing seven or eight to go public, I'm out, because this is supposed to be.
And those are good things to discuss and find out.
This is supposed to be private. So that's what I'm thinking, that if you're going that wide to seven or eight.
There are some alternatives that you could try. For example, if you gathered a pool of candidates, I'm making this up, but let's say you had 20 candidates, you could have your search consultant do the initial screening and then approach candidates and say, again, I'm making this up, we're about to propose to the school committee that they interview X number of people. Would you be willing to participate in a public interview with the school committee? And we're going to bring 10 of you in. If you want to sit through 10 interviews for an initial screening, and then maybe sit through a smaller number for a second interview, you could do this yourself. Again, the risk is that the candidates would have confidentiality in applying, but then the school committee would, but they would be at risk of public exposure if they elected to come for an interview.
I like the idea of having options. You know, and not necessarily doing it the typical way that it's always been done. I like the idea of having some various options.
Yeah, I mean, we can talk options, but there's risk to some of those options. For any option, there's always a risk.
And the risk is that.
But at that point, it becomes the candidate's decision.
But you might lose your best candidate. That's the whole thing. You probably will lose your best candidate, there's a good chance. I'm thinking that if they're just taking that risk or opportunity to leave a district that they're in today to come here, they would have to make that personal decision for that exposure.
We would know more as we move down the line as to how many applications have been received by us, anyway.
I think last time we had like 22 or something like that.
I had a good poll.
Yeah, we had a good, good number, and I know Pat narrowed it down.
Well, that's what you would expect from.
See, again, we do it in a number of different ways. Sometimes the school committee asks us to whittle the pool down for the search committee. So then we'll pick.
That's exactly what happened.
We'll pick the candidates that the search committee will see, and then the search committee will pick the candidates that the school committee will see. My experience has been that search committees love the opportunity to review all the applications and pick the candidates that they'll see, rather than leave it to us. My experience has been, interestingly enough, that when we leave it to the search committee and provide them with a voluntary tiering memo, which is our guidance as to who we think they should accept, with the understanding that they can see anybody they want, they're almost identical with one or two exceptions. I just, in fact, this is an area where some of my staff and I view this differently. I've always worked with search committees who would love to see all the applications and ask me for a tiering memo recommending who I suggest they should see. Others on my staff would prefer to give the school committee, the search committee, the candidates that they've screened out.
Yep.
For an interview. Now, if you're willing to interview eight or 10 people as part of an initial screening and interview, and set aside, you know, four nights to do that, or, you know, a week where you meet on a, several nights and maybe a Saturday, you could do that. And then, once you're done with the initial public interviews, you could then go to a second phase, which would be usually inviting the candidates to visit the district and possibly interview publicly at the end of the night, give the stakeholders an opportunity to see the candidates during the day, or have two or three of them come sort of scattered around the district, moving back and forth, and interview. You could do that as well. In other words, while there are rules for how this is done in a formal sense, there are really no rules about what you must do, and we can be very flexible to do what you like. My concern is that sometimes people who will tell you, we will bring you the best candidates, are usually lying to you about how many candidates you got. My experience has been that they grossly exaggerate the number of candidates they tell you that you got.
Who's they?
People that do this for money.
Oh, oh, okay.
Say you've got 45 candidates, and here are the eight that I've selected for you to interview. Whereas if the 45 candidates, half of them only called and expressed an interest, some of them didn't complete their applications. That's why the search committees like to see everything that comes in, especially if there's a school committee member or two sitting on the search committee as that quality control.
Makes sense. Definitely makes sense. In your experience, what has been the best scenario for you that you're going through?
You know, in, it depends on how much scrutiny you're getting from outside. In other words, if people are showing up at all the meetings, following this stuff very closely, candidates are going to be more insistent on privacy for as long as possible, and you might lose some of your better candidates. A search committee, while it's a longer process, gives you the ability to see more people. Now, you could tell the search committee, when I say three people, I mean that usually a district is fortunate if it can have three to four people who are superintendent for this district, you know, who are Grandby-ready to be your superintendent. If you've got, if you've got four outstanding candidates who you want to be your superintendent, that's a very fortunate position to be in. You know, the first search I did, which was in 1975, we had 120 people that wanted to be the superintendent in Cambridge, Massachusetts. The last time they did, the last time Cambridge did a search, they paid a lot of money to a search consultant, and first of all, all four finalists came from us and we weren't the search consultant, right? And they were all local, and four who were finalists, sort of the best they could do. And this is a district that pays the superintendent $265,000 a year in a, you know, very wealthy community, right? So, you know, that's what's happened to the market, is that there aren't a lot of people who want to do this job. A lot of the people who did it well retire early, and other people tend not to leave if they're in a place where they're comfortable. That's why if you can get three or four, you'd be fortunate. I would suggest to instruct the search committee to give you five candidates if they have them, but I'd also suggest that they not bring anybody forward who they're not prepared to have ready as a superintendent. And when school committee members sit on the search committee, that's insurance that the special interests in the community or on the faculty don't undermine your process. And I'm not suggesting that anybody's sinister in that respect, but my experience has been that, especially the faculty members, they tend to think of what's best for them and who's going to be best for them individually. It's a natural way of thinking.
It's unfortunate.
What is the optimum, if there is such a thing, what is the optimal number of members for the screening committee?
Well, the smaller, the better. Nine is probably, seven is great, nine is okay, 11 gets a little unwieldy, 13 is difficult. And the reason for that is, you bring the search committee in and you have an orientation. You say, here's our timeframe, we're ready to go. And then somebody says, well, I can't meet on Monday because I have to do this. And then someone else says, you know, I work in Worcester and I can't be there before 6 o'clock. And then someone else says, I can't work on Saturdays, I've got activities that I'm involved with. And the next thing you know, there's only three days a week when you can interview, and one of them's Friday, and that's out. So it takes you three weeks to get your candidates interviewed in a large group. In a smaller group, you have fewer, the short answer is nine or 11.
Isn't that what the data shows, anyway? That nowadays, that's what the data showed. There's a lot of data that states that the smaller, the better, the more effective the decision is.
Okay. So as far as, I completely agree that finding the screening committee, the search committee, that will have the productive conversations and discussions as opposed to turning into this huge debate that will prolong the process and talk about everyone's perspective, is great. But if we keep the search committee to a smaller number, and two of them being school committee members, I guess, for the community at large, including the school community, to be heard, are we using the vehicle of focus groups and surveys for all those members of the community, including the school community members?
I would suggest you invite everybody.
Right.
To respond to both.
Okay.
Focus groups are usually organized. Focus groups are usually organized for, well, we do them, for example, say we set aside a couple of days, and we did parents at the beginning and end of the day. Sometimes we do parents and community at hours before and after dinner. During the day, we talk to teachers, sometimes senior citizens, sometimes the town office, talk to people there, talk to all the members, all the faculty constituencies. And you can have eight or 10 focus groups in two days, get those done, while you leave the survey open for however long you want to keep it open.
And these focus groups are conducted by MASC. The screening committee doesn't have to be involved, or are they involved at all?
They do not, although sometimes screening committee members will come to the community focus groups. Teachers, faculty members, we only speak to faculty members in their faculty groups. In fact, we don't want administrators when we're talking to teachers, because they, teachers get very defensive and don't, they're not forthright when that happens. For the community, anybody can come and anyone can be there. It's interesting, because I usually try to work through the superintendent to warn the faculty not to hijack the community focus groups. And I sort of urge the school committee members, "You're welcome to the focus groups, because your community members are not intimidated by the presence of people they elect, but let them do the talking. And when they complain, let them complain."
Yeah.
But occasionally, or more than occasionally, sometimes principals or assistant principals come to the community groups and rebut concerns of the parents. And that can be problematic, so we sort of try to have them not do that.
I would say that would be problematic. Could we go over the pricing proposal that you put together? I think it's on page eight, everyone. So we start off with $9,500?
That's the consulting fees. And then the expenses would apply to mileage, printing, and postage. If you elect to do a brochure, and you need to have it printed as opposed to having the brochure done and having it online, we have, we have graphic designer on our staff. So if you, and if you were doing the search yourself, and you wanted us to do the brochure for you, we would design it and give it to you. If you wanted it printed, we have to go to the printer.
Kathy, do you know if we still have our brochure from last time?
I'm sure we have a copy of it.
Advertising, if you elect to do it, and mailing of your brochure, if you elect to do it, you know, that's postage.
Right, yep.
Otherwise, the, the expenses are limited to, generally limited to mileage, very small amount of supplies necessary.
So can we talk about advertising? So what do you see today? You know, we're talking about websites and the internet and Facebook pages and...
Yeah, social media, of course, is free. The website is free. Newspaper advertising is turning out to be a bit overrated.
I was gonna, that's what I was asking.
It does, it doesn't hurt to do some local advertising by that, you know, if it's the Gazette or if it's whatever newspapers...
Springfield Republican.
Springfield Republican, okay, that can get a bit expensive, too.
What about the sites like SchoolSpring or...
You know, SchoolSpring for a superintendent search brings you nothing but junk. I mean, it's minimal cost, but we get, we get people who want to be superintendents of apartment buildings responding on SchoolSpring. At SchoolSpring, you apply by just going, and people who aren't serious apply for superintendences.
For EdWeek, do you see a benefit in going on that?
EdWeek can have some benefit, but it's a diminishing benefit, in fact. The last few searches that we've done, they get 25 applications, three of them come from EdWeek. Now, there are some good people from out of state who want to come back to Massachusetts, who see these, these things on Education Week, and they want to come out and do it.
But if they want to come back, they might go to your website and see the same names?
Well, they do go to our website, and they see the vacancies posted on the website. And we also send it to all 52 state and territorial school boards associations. And on Saturday of this week, the National Association of Superintendent Searchers is meeting, and that's, that's the, that's under the umbrella of the National School Boards Association. And we meet with our counterparts from all over the country and talk about trends. We warn each other about people that you want to stay away from. We do have our congenital candidates who apply everywhere. The state school boards associations, by the way, are terrific resources for checking people out. And we, we do that for others, and they do it for us. And we do that, and that's a service that's available to you just by being members of the association.
Do you find on your local searches recently that you're getting a lot of people moving from other parts of the country to look at this, or is it all more...
Usually, there's one or two, maybe, maybe three, of people who are either from this area or who, for one reason or another, want to come back. But a different phenomenon from what we had 20 and 30 years ago is now, when someone wants to relocate to be a superintendent, there's almost always another adult in the household who wants a good job, too. And that adult in the household is likely to be a professional person. So, again, I'm making this up, but if, but if, you know, one, one adult is a potential superintendent and the other's a pediatrician, you just can't pick up from Muncie, Indiana, land here and start practicing. I mean, you might if you're a physician, not if you're an architect, not if you're a lawyer. So there's a bit of timidity about people relocating. Then there are people who will, they'll come, they'll promise you that they'll stay, and then they realize that the spouse or partner doesn't, ultimately doesn't want to come, and then they decide after two years they go back where they came from. Or the retirees who come and they realize that...
It's too darn cold.
No, not that it's old, it's retired. Being superintendent in Massachusetts is very difficult. Most of them think, "Oh, good, I'll retire here in Wisconsin, and I'll go to the Connecticut Valley." How tough can it be? I mean, who's out there with dairy farmers? They have no idea what... This is, this is, it's an amazing phenomenon, but people have no idea of the level of sophistication that exists in rural parts of Massachusetts.
That's why we have tough education in Massachusetts.
Well, you know, when they thought they could force districts to consolidate, they decided they'd start by picking on the Connecticut Valley, and they just didn't realize who they were messing with. You know, we warn them, there's five big colleges out there. People from all over the world come to study, and they like it here, and they stay, not to mention people who are professionals working all over the area, or now, the people who work from home and can intellectualize you under the table from their living room. You're just not used to that. So they think it's easy, and they retire, and they're going to come here and coast. And that's not going to happen.
So advertising, just like I said earlier, just, it's on your website, that's probably the best place for it to be.
Yeah, it's free, too, no matter what you do.
And people are looking, they're going to look there anyway.
Which, I think I also added at somewhere close to the end here, page 14 has the list of free services, that if you elect to manage the search yourself, using the resources of the district, you generally know fees and no cost.
Glenn, a quick question. The initial page, page, whatever that was, where we have the cost for advertising and all of that right here. You know, for print advertising, for instance, it gives a range of $2,800 to $4,000, and it gives an example of Education Week, and the same Education Week is $1,800 on this page.
Well, Education Week is $1,800. Other, but there are some districts that want to advertise in more than one venue.
Okay, so you're...
So, Education Week's about $1,800. That gives you online and printing.
So if you have access to national, you know...
State School Boards Association and Superintendents Association.
Why would, why would anybody elect to pay for any additional national advertising?
A couple of reasons. About 65,000 people get Education Week, and they're all over the country. Sometimes it makes you feel better about your search if you advertise it. Sometimes the community wants to see, "What have you done to promote this vacancy?" But it's, I mean, we stopped, for example, 10 years ago, we stopped advertising in the Boston Globe, just totally, because A, it was bringing us nothing, and we weren't going to advertise in a newspaper that was hostile to public education. So we decided we'd send them a message, and we'd save our clients money, and it had no effect on, on the volume of people. Education Week has had residual effect. Do you know, are you familiar with it? Do you get it here?
I don't know if they get it here. I have not come in with it.
I am.
Do you get it?
Not that I get it anymore. No, I think that was, no, I think we did, and I think that was one of the cuts.
Okay, well, it's not a bad publication, but, and you'll see 15 to 20 superintendencies a week advertised there, in other positions, but not, not a lot of them. And sometimes, by the way, the name of the search consultant is bigger than the...
Yeah, I, I guess the reason why I'm asking is, it's more about the potential candidates and what are they using? And I'm thinking, you know, common sense would tell you access to...
A lot of them are using social media by going to our website.
Right. I mean, that seems like the...
And as I said...
Typical protocol, so why spend an extra...
What you might want to consider, if you wanted to do this and money wasn't issued...
Oh, money's an issue.
Money's always a issue.
I'll just tell you, Braintree, which is a moderately affluent community, you know, outside, but next to Quincy, it's the home of John Adams, John Quincy Adams, we provided them with technical assistance for their search. We assisted them with focus groups, we put up an online survey, we designed their brochure. We accepted their applications for them, tiered them, and then brought the applications out to the district and said, "Here," and they're managing the rest from there. And they're doing that, getting it for free. Now, I'm not, trust me, we love your money.
Yes, yes.
You've been a member district since the association was started, and you've been paying us dues for 70 years or 65 years. So that's, I mean, when I say these services are free, they're in part underwritten by your dues. So with that, and, and again, it depends on who in the district is available to, to help to facilitate that.
Yeah, it does take an awful lot of time and effort to do it yourself. Yeah.
So you need to figure that out for yourself.
I keep hearing that, you know, and it just, on the other hand, it just feels like it's so critically important. And at the end of the day, we'll just make our lives easier. I'm not suggesting we do or don't, I'm just saying that to not put in that level of commitment. It's unquestionable anyway.
In the case of Braintree, they're doing a very diligent initial search, and then they'll be doing a very diligent public search. We're helping them compile their questions and annotate their questions for them. It's just a range of services. What they, what they will not get, but what they'll get from their central office, is the coordination of the scheduling, the logistics around setting up the interviews.
That's where I think it's, that's where the time-consuming piece is.
And occasionally, some of your candidates can be a bit high maintenance and will be looking for someone they can go to to talk about what's happening and keeping track of whatever it is. But again, that's the range that's available to you, and you should think about what you'd like to do, and we'd be happy to support whatever decision you make, whether you want to have it or not.
Well, I want to thank you very much for coming all the way out here from Boston tonight and giving us this presentation. And I was going to ask if anyone had any closing questions, we can wrap this up.
And maybe I'm just missing it, because I kept trying to look through, but you were talking about, say, you know, like if you did 10 focus groups, or whatever, you know, a hundred different ones, are there extra fees for that, or is that part of the $9,500?
It's part of the $9,500. There's no extra fee beyond what you see there.
Okay.
So if you had three focus groups, if you had 10 focus groups, it's, it's more the number of days in the district you have focus groups, and we anticipate that, so...
Okay, thank you.
If you wanted to go with just the online survey and host your own focus groups, many members of school committees are very capable of hosting a community focus group and gathering the data. That could be part of your free service packages. Or you could just, you know, just delegate the whole thing and have somebody else do it for you.
Emery, Ian, do you have any other questions or Jim?
No, I'm also, thank you.
I have one question. Going from MASC doing all the services for us, and going to the other extreme of what we just talked about, having the school community coordinate, school committee coordinate all the effort, how much difference does it take in terms of the length of the process? Do you think that that is a huge factor?
Now, the length of the process is more affected by how quickly you can get people to cooperate. So if, in fact, you had to have somebody onboard by July, you want to do an expedited process that doesn't waste any time, and you want to get a, you want to get a search committee that, that is told, you will, let me give you an expedited time. Let's say you announce your vacancy the last week in March, and you close your search four weeks later, it opened four weeks rather than six, so by the end of April, you've got your candidates ready to go, your search committee has been oriented during the month of April. Last week in April, you have your search committee at a specific date, which they've saved, picking the candidates whom they interview later in that week, in the first week in May, and they send the school committee candidates by the second week in May, and the school committee expedites those interviews and gets it done quickly, and is in a position to make a hiring decision within two weeks, just by speeding the process along. You could conceivably, by June 1st or June 8th, that's a Monday, be ready to make a hiring decision. Now, the candidate might or might not be available July 1st, might be available September 1st, you might want that person available September 1st with a, an overlap with your interim superintendent, or you might find that you didn't like your pool, and you need to start over, and you have an interim superintendent covering you for, for next year. The key is, you know, I don't, I've done no background work on the school committee. I don't know if any of you are educators or not, and I don't want to offend anybody, but the education community is a very high processing community. And, and, you know, process, as I always tease my friend Tom Scott from the Superintendents Association, "When the school committees play the superintendents in softball, the school committees always win, because we're more interested in outcome than process." What you need to do is expedite that process, get it done quickly, and, and see how fast you can do it. And if that's what you want to do, you can do it, but it requires the cooperation of people, and it requires that a search committee be willing to meet... people, and it requires that a search committee be willing to meet quickly, expeditiously, and not delay. Because you're not going to have weather problems from here on out. A lot of our, although interestingly enough, Marshfield had their search all planned right through the end of February, and they made their hire right at the beginning of March, and they didn't lose a single day. It snowed in between their meetings.
Wow.
110 inches of snow, and...
That worked that well.
They didn't lose a day. But now, you're not worried, you wouldn't be worried about that now.
If it were to go with your initial input, that at certain time during the year, the pool gets a little larger, and it allows the school committees to look at a wider range of candidates, what would that timeline be, and when do those searches typically end? Is it end of the year, by the end of the year, or does it go to next year?
The people who started their searches in September and ended them in November or December ended up with the best candidates. There were, I think we talked about this, five or six school districts that had vacancies that got started right out of the box and finished very early in January, and they really got terrific candidates.
So sometimes you just don't know, though.
Sometimes you just don't know. And there may well be people who were planning on candidateing in September who will see something, excuse me, will see something in March.
Yeah, I don't know. My feeling is that it's all going to work out the way it's supposed to work out. I don't think that we can crystal ball anything, you know? We do the process when we're doing the process, when we're ready now, and to consider, should we put it off because that's the best timing typically seems?
I think we have to look at historical information, too. You know, you're, I mean, right when you look at surveys or data, I mean, if data shows that it's best to, you know, start in August, September, that's all we can go by, it doesn't mean we'll do that, but...
Yeah, unless people have been reaching out to you, your best recruiters will be the community in Granby, the people in the, sort of greater Granby, who will be talking with your friends and encouraging them about this, and, you know, the superintendents in this area all talk to each other and share information.
Anything else for Glenn?
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you very much, we really, really appreciate you coming all the way up here. I'll put all the extra paper here so you can share it with your...
Thank you.
And this complimenting out.
Excellent.
I was hoping that you would leave me out a little.
Thank you, Glenn. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and you'll be hearing back from us. Thank you.
It was nice meeting you.
Same here.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. So we had our two presentations over the last week or so. I would say that our next committee will have to open it up for discussion, have it on the agenda, so think about it, look over all the information you received tonight and last week, and we'll have to allot some time to really discuss this, on, you know, whether we want to go with one of these vendors, whether we want to go with paying for services or trying to do it on our own. So we definitely have options. So our next item is, you all have received the contract for Dr. Hool, our candidate for interim superintendent, and Dr. Hool has graciously accepted this position, so thank you very much, Dr. Hool. We welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I know the ink's not dry yet.
Well, it's not even very dry.
It's close, it's close.
The board hasn't happened yet, but it's going to be early.
And so you've all reviewed the contract, so I would, I'm looking for a motion to accept this contract, and we'll get it signed, and...
I'll make a motion to accept the contract of employment for the interim superintendent of schools for Granby.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion on it? Dr. Hool, do you have any?
No, looks good to me.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll get it signed. So we have a couple copies here.
Okay.
I have the two copies, and I'll sign it and pass them down.
Okay.
Welcome aboard officially.
Thank you.
Yes, welcome.
Yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome. There we go. All right. One for Kathy, one for me.
So you wanted to, also, the next item was budget.
Yes, Dr. Rodriguez asked me to visit with the administration to talk a little bit about DFY16 budget now that we have the governance numbers, and the process has begun at the state level. So basically, I was just looking to set a schedule for budget hearings, or budget workshops and hearings. The administration agreed by consensus that they would be available to come on March 30th if you all could meet on that day so we could begin the process.
What date does that fall on?
It's a Monday.
It's Monday.
And then we figured the 6th of April is a regular meeting anyway, so we could certainly try and do what we need to do at that point, and then probably look at a public hearing on May 2nd, I believe is that, first Monday in May.
So March 30th, filing for everyone?
What time?
About 6:00. 6:00?
Sure. Maybe 6:00 p.m.
May 2nd, did you say, is the annual? What you would have to do is, before you vote, you have to have a public budget hearing.
Yep.
So I believe it's the second month of...
It'll be the first Monday.
Yeah, whatever the first Monday is in May, I thought it was, but I thought I looked quickly and it was the second, but I could be wrong.
When is the annual town meeting?
It's the 4th, I'm sorry, May 4th.
Okay.
So the annual, Tommy? Kathy, do you know the date yet?
I haven't seen anything yet.
I've heard the 11th.
The 11th?
Yeah, I thought it was the 11th, but I'll check if it's posted.
Is it one meeting, is it one meeting or two, though?
Usually two.
Two. Yeah. My understanding is that they do non-financial, I mean, it's in one meeting, and then do another meeting in June for the financial piece, in hopes that the state has gotten closer to numbers we can count on, which may or may not happen since the whole process is five weeks later than normal. So, okay. But if you're going to do a public hearing on May 4th, you would just have a legal requirement to post at least seven days prior to the hearing in the newspaper, that the hearing must come out.
So March 30th, two weeks from tonight, I guess, we'll be back.
Yeah. So I'm already...
It's the 11th.
The 11th?
Oh, 11th, okay.
Have things gotten better or worse with some of these figures coming far away?
Chapter 70 has gotten a little better, school choice is a little bit better, charter school tuition reimbursement is down, but also charter school tuitions are down as well. So, you know, those numbers are looking a little bit better than they have been. However, the 9C cuts, which was a 22% decrease in the kindergarten grant, and a 2% decrease in circuitry have held through the governor's proposal going forward in FY16, so those were not restored, so.
So it's not 100% of the full-day kindergarten.
So I have some good news and some bad news. So, you know, now it's, it'll wind its way, the next thing will be to go through the House Ways and Means Committee, and through the House, and the Senate Ways and Means Committee, and the Senate, and there'll be a conference committee, and hopefully by July 1, we'll have a hand paper.
So I don't know if this is what you're asking, Jim, but as far as, who elected, it was around $530,000 deficit?
Yep.
Are we at that point with the same assumptions and information that we have?
We've done some preliminary numbers, you're in a little bit better place, not a lot, a little bit better place in terms of whatever. So, you know, I've looked at the numbers, but certainly I'm going to meet with the administration next week and, you know, just kind of get their input and how they see things, and where they'll come to you with what we have found and what we might recommend to you consider.
Okay. So we have an executive session, it's going to be a short one.
So I'm gonna... May I just suggest, before we go there, now that we kind of jolted our salves a little bit and just realized that May 11th is the day we're going to be starting the annual town meeting process, depending on what the budget numbers shape up to be, that we add more meetings in the process than we did, yeah, for Mondays?
Yeah, so March 30th, I think, is the tell-all date of how many meetings we might need to add between now and that May day.
Yeah, we'll see where April 6 lands us, and then what else we might have to do before we have a public hearing.
Okay. Good point, good reminder. Okay. We're going to move into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law 30A, Section 21, A2 and 3, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions, or contract negotiations with non-union personnel to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. As such, this discussion in an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body. An executive session is necessary to protect the bargaining or litigation position of the body. The committee will be returning into regular session. Roll call, please.
Emery, I'm aye.
Deanne, Pam Raffouski, aye.
Maroon Court, aye.
Jim Patrus, aye.
Mike Questel, aye.